Call to order the Committee on Finance and Property, and I call to order the Committee of the Whole. Good evening. This is our City Council Budget Hearing as a continuation of our further discussions on the FY '26 proposed budget. Tonight, we're going to hear from our Planning Director Darlene Nguyen, Chief O'Connor of our Fire Department, and Chief Lola Scherer from the Police Department. Want to thank Ken Clausen, Cindy McPherson, our Assistant City Clerk Katie Dupont, and Mr. Ailes for being here as well, as well as our Budget Analyst Jerry Perry. So without further ado, I think we'll just jump right in. Ms. Nguyen, if you're prepared, and get started.
Good evening, councilors, and thank you for having me. And thank you to Cindy and Ken, two of my staffers, for attending, and maybe a few others watching in person. I'm Darlene Nguyen. I'm the Planning Director, or the Director of Planning and Community Development. I'm happy to report that after many years of a bit of turnover, we've only had one staff turnover last year, and we're still carrying that vacancy, but it's nice to have some continuity. And I thank my staff for the time and dedication that they put into the work that we do. As many of you know, and all of you know, but many people of the public don't, we represent over, we staff over 10 boards and commissions, and we represent a wide array of areas of expertise in the city, listed up there, but Affordable Housing Trust, the Community Preservation Fund, the Designer Review Board, Economic and Community Development Council, Harbor Management, we kind of, we're on and off with that one right now, Historic District Commission, Open Space and Recreation Committee, Parking and Traffic Commission, and the Planning Board. And so we have our hands in all of those little things from time to time, and we're kind of going in different places and trying to keep up on how all of those different land uses and systems interact within the city. And with our permitting boards, just a little snapshot of our last year, we've reviewed more than 300, or nearly 350 applications amongst all those boards, and almost 200 of those are Conservation Commission permits. It's a really busy office, and we are very grateful that Conservation Funds have enabled us to hire a part-time field agent, not out of the general budget, but who has helped to support that position significantly. And last year, we managed grants that are, and that we had applied for that totaled $170,000. In this coming year, we have applications in for over $900,000 in grants. $850,000 of that is for a CDBG application, which was a significant portion of our work in the last year preparing for that application to create a housing rehab program for the city. Let's see. So my budget is fairly straightforward every year, I think. A lot of pretty easy-to-understand lines, and it doesn't change that much. Seventy percent of my budget is for staff. And again, they're highly valued and do really great work. So a couple of the, I don't know, I'm happy to answer questions. There are a couple of changes that we made. We got rid of the appraisal line. That was kind of an as-needed line, small amount of money. We aligned the CADA budget with the, for the Beverly Shuttle. We aligned that with, we're in our, in August, we'll start our third year of our existing contract with them, and that is the price of the contract for the third year. So that's a three, we run three-year contracts with the, so then we will go out to RFP a bid after that. That is a MBTA Supplemental Services Grant recipient, so we do get, we have gotten up to $60,000 back to the city from that program. And we would have to apply for that again when that is due, which is still a couple of years out. So we've got three more, two more years on that grant, I think. And that was not included in my total of grants. So yeah, I mean, other than that, you know, we've got a couple of large projects that we're trying to manage. We're wrapping up the sign ordinance. We are just getting started on an Economic Development Action Plan, which is one of the grants that we're managing through this next year. And we are hoping to update our ADU ordinance to align with the state regulations, which was a lot of work to get to our local one. We do still have to make a couple, we don't have to make tweaks, but we'd like to make it consistent, I guess is the best way to say that. And the other priority projects are looking at our transportation systems. We have a number of them, and we'd like to figure out how to be most efficient and use our money wisely. So that's kind of a key project to look at this year.
Thank you, Ms. Nguyen. Before I open it up to questions, just want to thank you and your staff. You are very responsive to our requests, which we get a lot of regarding different developments or rumors, and I appreciate the feedback and insights from your group. Councilors, any questions, comments? We'll start with our Subcommittee. Counselor Sweeney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Ms. Nguyen, for the summary, and I'm particularly excited about the Economic Development Action Plan and all the work that you and Ms. Schaefer have done on that front. My questions are with regards to the Associate Planner position, the second position. You mentioned, actually, it looks like it's just one position. You mentioned the position is vacant. Could you outline the tasks that that role would otherwise take on for the department?
Sure. So we have five technical staff, I would say, and two admin staff, full-time on our, in our staff. And the Associate Planner is one of the technical staff positions. It's generally an entry-level position, and each of our five planners, except for the, well, I would say Conservation Agent does Conservation Commission, as I explained. There's a lot of permits. That's what they do. The rest of the four staff planners take on about two boards each, two staff, and do the daily kind of intake of permits and applications and staffing those meetings, many of which happen at night. So the Associate Planner would normally hold two board position, or two staff positions for boards. So right now, Ken and I are each covering one of those boards. And then, in addition to that, you know, they, I think, having that position filled enables us to do more of the longer, longer-range planning, do some of the larger projects. You know, I'd like to give that person some concrete projects to kind of build and grow their skills and transition them into the planning field.
Okay. Thank you for that, Ms. Nguyen. And so it sounds like if this position were not to exist at all, not only would the two boards go unstaffed, but that there would be a lack of capacity for some of the general initiatives that the Planning Department has been driving forward. Are there any other big impacts to the departmental operations of this position being vacant?
Well, I think the big thing is we have to staff the boards. You know, we have, so there, that burden gets put onto other staff. And, and yes, but then to your second point, yeah, I think we'd have to prioritize what other work in terms of long-range planning that we can do. That's not kind of the day-to-day emergency, really, things that we need to run those processes to get the permits processed and to deal, to address customer service, which we get a lot of every day, just from councilors, we get neighborhood questions and things like that. So it would, it would, it would require a reshifting of how we operate.
Okay. So thank you for that, Ms. Nguyen. And the follow-up, which may be from Mr. Ailes then, is given that it sounds like the department has done a good job taking on the division of duties in the absence of this position, is there a reason that if the goal is to bring somebody on eventually, we're looking to only fund six months of the salary and delay the hiring as opposed to trying to fully fund the position and hire it sooner rather than later?
Yeah. I think we, let me get up here. We could probably tag-team this answer because, you know, it's been an ongoing discussion with all of our departments that have this dynamic where there's a vacancy. And as I said, I think the last department we spoke about this with, it might have been the mayor's office. Anytime there's a vacancy, we try to take the approach of fully evaluating the functions, trying to make sure that whatever gets put in place in terms of a backfill is the most effective use of that resource. That's ongoing. We know that Darlene and her team have been great about filling the gaps right now, but that reaches a saturation point where it starts really impacting work. So we do know we want to ultimately backfill this position, but we still have some time before we're, we're going to get that job posted and backfilled.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that, Mr. Ailes. From a budgetary perspective, similar to my comments with the Sustainability Director in the mayor's office, I would think that we'd be better off if we know we're going to want to fill the position in some capacity, budgeting for a full fiscal year, because when we get to next fiscal year, then that leaves that gap that needs to be made up going into FY '27. And given how tight the margins are in the city budget, that's certainly a concern of mine, but it does sound like this is a position that we do need to hire for, and it can't be eliminated without impacting pretty significantly the departmental operations of the Planning Department. So that's more of a comment than a question. That's everything.
Thank you, Counselor. Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much, Ms. Nguyen. I'll echo the thanks for your presentation, your department's work, and also to your staff that are here. I just wondered if you could, if you might have, and you may not, data about the CADA Shuttle ridership, if we have any sense of how utilized it is. But my second question kind of along with that was just, I'm curious if you have a sense or want to share with us anything that you're thinking about in terms of how successful additionally, I know it's, it's not the same, it's not the same thing, and it's not the same line item, but the Salem Skipper itself, and if that's had any impact on the CADA Shuttle ridership, or they really kind of operate separately.
One of the challenges we're facing is that data collection is different amongst the two service providers. So for the Beverly Shuttle, we contract out with CADA. We call it the CADA Shuttle there, you know, at will to responding to our RFP, but, and they traditionally do not collect a significant amount of data. For example, they don't collect stop, stop data. It's a, it's a flag route officially, although there are stops on a map and stops, you know, on a printed flyer that say where generally it'll stop. You can grab that bus anywhere. So they do not take, they do not count on and offs in that set at each location right now. I do understand, because I also sit on the MPO Board on behalf of the mayor, which is the Regional Transportation Agency, that they have acquired a grant to obtain passenger counting equipment. I will also add that CADA went fare-free for the next two years recently, and so that also changes things. How do you count people if you're not collecting fares, that kind of thing? But I do know that they, we track monthly ridership. It's a requirement of our grant with the MBTA. Ridership is approximately 1,300 users a month. We have gone back above pre-COVID levels, where it went down to under 1,000. So it is, you know, kind of rising again. It's not a huge amount of ridership. And one of the issues is that when we, we did change the line in 2022, 2022, and it's now, you know, an hour-long ride, a two-hour headway, so it's a long route. But there is a need for fixed route service, and there are people that really rely on fixed route service and appreciate that. There are also people who like on-demand shuttle service, which is what the Salem Skipper is, essentially kind of a rideshare system that's subsidized by currently a combination of federal and local money. And we're doing a two-year pilot program as context for that, expanding that service from Salem to Beverly and Danvers. Ridership is, is fantastic. Numbers are above their VIA's expectations. We just had our quarterly check-in this week, and they are the top service amongst VIA, which is the provider of that shuttle. And so they're, they're, you know, still a large percentage of the rides are Salem-generated, but they are getting more, we're about 20% of the rides touch Beverly, either come or go to Beverly. So it's, it's a difficult question, which is why it's something we want to parse out, because then there's also the services, the transportation services that the senior center provides. And how can we kind of look at this whole picture and figure out how to best serve our community and get people to where they want to go in a way that works while understanding that we're not going to make everybody happy? But we do, you know, with the Skipper coming to its second year, and this is the second year of its two-year pilot, and the Beverly Shuttle kind of approaching its last year of this current contract with this provider, we still have the grant, you know, it's a good time to look at it and try and see what we do next.
Thank you very much, Ms. Nguyen, and I agree that there is a need, despite the success of the Salem Skipper, I do think, and I see the benefit of a fixed route that people know they can depend on. So I appreciate the challenge of getting the data for the ridership there, and appreciate you sharing. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Counselor Rotundo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Nguyen, I know, Mr., Counsel Sweeney had mentioned the associate position. I know it's scheduled to possibly come on. So for clarification purposes, we're not looking, or you guys aren't looking to hire staff until, say, January? Is that if I'm correct?
That's my understanding. Yeah, that's kind of what I've, I don't know how to say that, but yes, that's, that's what the budget says. It's a six-month, it's a funding for six months, so presumably it would be January that we would approach a hire.
Follow-up to that, I know there's a, you know, I mean, you know you're doing a lot of work, and you're planning a little cleanup, I guess, with the ADU to catch up with the state, but we also have the design standards, which were back in 2020, right? That came on then, and I think it got flipped around to other reasons. Where are we at with the design standard right now? And I mean, I know it's burdensome on your department, especially not having the Associate Planner to help pick up some of that, but it is an important feature of helping with the development of the city and kind of giving guidance, which has been sitting there for almost five years.
I know.
So I'm just kind of curious of where we're sitting with that now.
I feel your pain, and you, but raising that raise, a big thing that I wanted to also point out, that we've, we achieved our MBTA Communities Compliance with very little fanfare this March, April. Thank you, Ken, for all the work that you did on that. That has kind of upended our, or that upended our design, our design standards proposal because ideally, we would have been able to incorporate it in, as one piece, but we thought it would be too complicated. And then it took two years to get MBTA Communities passed anyway. So it's, it, because of the very, the things that have changed in our zoning ordinance since 2020, if you remember, we also reduced the height in some locations, we've kind of, we require a lot of tweaks to those design standards. And I do want to get back to it, and there's a lot of competing priorities, and I think it's figuring out which one is most urgent. All of them sometimes seem urgent, and trying to figure out how to find the bandwidth to do all of the things that we want to do.
Thank you, Ms. Nguyen. Go ahead.
Just to follow, what is the priority then in your office right now? Speaking of priorities, what are you looking as priority moving forward?
Well, we would like to finish up the sign ordinance. I think I wrote that, yeah, there is a summary on the bottom of that section somewhere. Finish up the sign ordinance in the early fall, make the tweaks to the ADU ordinance. We are reviewing at the moment 12 proposals for the Economic Development Action Plan, which wildly exceeded our expectations. So we'll start getting, that has a 12-month timeline for a grant-funded project. So some of these things are really limited by the funding pools, so particularly that program, that project. And then the transportation piece, you know, there is, although we could continue as, as is, there is a, an end point to the current round of funding, and we'd really like to spend some time looking at that. And then I will, I will throw in, if we get the CDBG grant, which we would find out in early fall, that would be an October 1st start date, and that might be all hands on deck. That's going to be a significant lift. I expect we'll be, we'll need to hire staff specifically for that program, from that program. And we are expecting to mainly consult out most of the work to a third-party provider, but, but that would be, getting that up off the ground would be a significant effort. So that really takes us through the fall, at least, and hopefully there's, you know, time to do, to pay attention to the design standards in the spring. And I know I keep pushing it off, and I, sorry.
No, it's just a question. Like I said, I get priorities change and whatever the case may be, and I know it keeps, it's a moving target and staff and everything, but I just, was just curious for the update and where the other priorities are, so I appreciate that. Thank you. And I do appreciate all the work you do.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Good, Counsel. Thank you. Counselor Hausman.
Yes. Good evening, Ms. Nguyen. I want to repeat the appreciation for the work that you and your staff do with limited resources. Could you elaborate a little bit upon the CDBG grant and, you know, what, what the scope of that work would be and the, the end goal of that, of that project?
So it's, we made an $850,000 request for funds from the Massachusetts Community Development Block Grant Program to create or restart a housing rehab program. And the goal would be to contract that out to a entity that's already running a housing rehab program. There are a few in the area that could respond to this RFP and run the program for us, but there'd be administrative costs on the city side, or administrative effort on the city side in managing the grant and managing the consulting entity. I think we estimated, if I'm going back to, maybe it, it would be, that would fund approximately 14 to 15 homes, primarily one, two, three, four-family homeowner-occupied properties.
And how many years would the grant be for if it's received?
This is only a one-year grant, and they're usually 18 months, so.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Good. Counselor Bowen.
Thank you. Adding my thanks, I had a similar question on the design standards, and would just add, if that's work that the council or community partners can help take forward, since I think a lot of the initial technical work got done in that first round, and it may be some of the more kind of, what do we want to do with it, work left, but recognize if there's more technical work left, that, that really sits with the Planning Department, but to the extent that can be handed off and carried forward, excited to, to help take that on. I think the only question I had that wasn't covered is I saw in one of the smaller lines that the department's using the on-call translation services, and so was curious how that's working for the department and kind of the scope, because I know we've talked about language access as a priority citywide, and some departments using that kind of service, some departments using the iPad translators, and, and seeing that the budget line is not large, if it's working well, I'd love to see that expand in other departments, but...
We, we played around with that and started doing that. Primarily, Wongari was out on leave at the time, so we needed a solution, and we were looking to see what we could do, so we started trying to contract, find somebody who we could contract with for on-call. We didn't actually end up, I don't think we've still completed the contract. We were trying to work with UMass to provide that service because it's in-house, state, state provider, accepted provider. But we did end up using some consulting, some translation services from another provider for both the business survey that we did for the economic, did we do, we, might not have made it into the business survey, I'm thinking, but it was required for the CDBG public hearings and, and community survey that we did. And so we kind of just had to, had to wing it and figure out a solution because it was required. We also used the iPad translator from time to time. We just, they're available in City Hall, so we'll go down and get one, or bring one, Erin will bring it to the office, like, to a business if she's going to meet with someone who she knows doesn't speak English as a first language. So we do use those, and so we're just really starting the translation, but I would, you know, I think, working with the DEI office, we would start to put in some, place something that's more consistent, I think, City Hall-wide, making sure we're all using the same provider and things like that.
Ken, any other questions for Ms. Nguyen? Okay. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you for your time.
I will invite up Chief O'Connor for Fire Department. How are you, Chief?
Good.
Good.
That's really disappointing.
Thank you. Look forward to this every year?
I do, too.
It's appropriately meaning to keep that.
It's exciting.
Or is yours, Chief?
Thank you very much, everybody, for having me here. Appreciate the opportunity to come before you. Pretty straightforward, just real quick going through what I gave you in front of you. I gave you the response time maps, the volume maps for the number of incidents we have across the city. We're up to about 6,400 incidents. Last year, when I started, we were doing about 3,900. Excuse me. The response times are, for the most part, are in pretty good shape. There are some parts of the city where we do a little bit better, certainly downtown, the most dense, we have some really good response times down there. You see where it gets a little bit to that darker red color, some of those, those incidents, if you see red, and it's mostly down the end of Hull Street, that end, you can be up over 11 and a half minutes, so. But fortunately for us, it's not a lot of that, so. All that kind of plays back into what we're doing kind of every day. We respond to a whole host of emergencies. This budget represents us moving forward with pretty much the same stuff that we've been doing all along, still represents all of our firefighters going into the budget, budget year, 44 firefighters, 12 lieutenants, four captains, four deputies representing the emergency response line. Those are the folks that go out and answer the calls every day. On the staff side, we remain two in fire prevention, a captain, an inspector, and then my training officer. Aside from that, we have the, my administrative aide, Maria, who is just phenomenal. If, I'll tell you, she, she runs the place, you know? Very lucky to have her, so. Appreciate everything that she does every day. I probably should have given her this to review it, so that she could have organized it and made it look much prettier, but, but that's what's in the first couple pages. So they, just real quick, I'd like to just say about the folks. First and foremost, you've seen the work that's happening over at the building, over at the building right now.
We just, they're available in City Hall, so we'll go down and get one or bring one, Erin will bring it to the office, like, to a business if she's going to meet with someone who she knows doesn't speak English as a first language. So we do use those, and so we're just really starting the translation. But I would, you know, I think working with the DEI office, we would start to put in some, place something that's more consistent, I think, City Hall-wide, making sure we're all using the same provider and things like that.
Any other questions for Ms. Wynn? Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you for your time.
I will invite up Chief O'Connor for Fire Department. How are you, Chief?
Good. Good.
That's really disappointing.
Thank you.
Look forward to this every year?
I do, too.
It's appropriately meaning to keep that.
It's exciting.
Or is yours, Chief?
Thank you very much, everybody, for having me here. Appreciate the opportunity to come before you. Pretty straightforward, just real quick going through what I gave in front of you. I gave you the, the response time maps, the volume maps for the number of incidents we have across the city. We're up to about 6,400 incidents last year. When I started, we were doing about 3,900. Excuse me. The response times are, for the most part, are in pretty good shape. There are some parts of the city where we do a little bit better, certainly downtown, the most dense, we have some really good response times down there. You see where it gets a little bit to that darker red color, some of those, those incidents, if you see red, and it's mostly down the end of Hull Street, that end, you can be up over 11 and a half minutes, so. But fortunately for us, it's not a lot of that, so. All that kind of plays back into what we're doing kind of every day. We respond to a whole host of emergencies. This budget represents us moving forward with pretty much the same stuff that we've been doing all along, still represents all of our firefighters going into the budget, budget year, 44 firefighters, 12 lieutenants, four captains, four deputies representing the emergency response line. Those are the folks that go out and answer the calls every day. On the staff side, we remain two in fire prevention, a captain, an inspector, and then my training officer. Aside from that, we have the, my administrative aide, Maria, who is just phenomenal. If, I'll tell you, she, she runs the place, you know? Very lucky to have her, so. Appreciate everything that she does every day. I probably should have given her this to review it, so that she could have organized it and made it look much prettier. But, but that's what's in the first couple pages. So they, just real quick, I'd like to just say about the, the folks. First and foremost, you've seen the work that's happening over at the building, over at the building right now. We very much appreciate the support that we've been given from the mayor, Brian, from the council. It's, it's been a long time coming. It's just amazing to see the work inside. The guys really appreciate it, the folks inside the building really appreciate it. It's a little tough for them sometimes to appreciate it to its fullest right now during the day, because it's pretty loud. But I'll tell you, everybody kind of looks at it from the same way, especially those of us that have been there for so long. It's, it's almost music to our ears to actually see some work being done inside that building. It can be a little uncomfortable, but it's really coming along. It looks fantastic, so we absolutely appreciate the support with that. And I certainly appreciate the patience of everybody that, that's in the building, that's, that's, that's there while the work is going on. We, we can't do anything without them. A great group of people that, that, that show up every day and, and do the job, so I think that's fantastic. I highlighted a couple of the lines that we typically will talk about every year. I, I, I put in here, I have three overtime lines. Each one of them serves a different function. The shift coverage is what keeps me at 13 every day. We never drop below 13. That gives me three pumps, a ladder, and the officer in charge. Each of the pumps and the ladder never have fewer than an officer and two firefighters, so three, three total people on, on those trucks. And the, the officer in charge rides in a, in a Tahoe by himself. That's the emergency response side. And they're the ones that do the 6,400 calls a year, just back and forth, back and forth, while they're training, while they're doing their station maintenance, while that stuff is going on. They're the ones that are, that are out doing that call. So again, that's the shift coverage line. That's what that's pretty much dedicated for. The general emergency line, that's the line that we use for emergency callbacks. Anytime we have an emergency, we have to call back people. Again, we're, we're running with 13, so typically we have to bring more of our own folks back to the fire. It's for, it's for weather events. Sometimes, especially if we, we get a, like, some of the real bad snowstorms, or if we know that we're getting, we're going to get pounded with a real windstorm, we might put the squads in with two people in them, so they can kind of babysit power lines that go down and stuff like that, and make sure that nobody gets into trouble with those. The, again, snow plowing, that, the, that, that money generally comes from the general emergency line. And then we have another line, that's the training classes line. That's overtime for off-duty training. We do a tremendous amount of on-duty training every day. The, the, the trucks come down, or they go to a certain place, and they'll do some training stuff on duty. But we can't do everything on duty. We can't do real live fire events. We can't, we can't get them into some classes with the Fire Academy on duty. It becomes very, very challenging. So that's money that's given to, to those guys to go do off-duty training. I use that for fire officer meetings, stuff like that, but that's that third overtime line. I think the only other three things that you really see different in my budget this year are building maintenance, kind of reduce that line. This is, we all know that this is, this is a very challenging budget year. So I feel comfortable with the amount that's funded in that line for this year. We do have the work that's going on in the building right now, and there's some other things that are happening, but I still need to keep the other buildings in, in headquarters. We still have to do work in those, in those three buildings, so. We took a look at that line, and again, we just made an adjustment to where I'm comfortable, but hopefully we'll bring it back to where it needs in the future, so. EMS supplies, coming out of COVID, this line used to be very short. It was, I think it was like $5,000 my first year. COVID changed all that. We had a lot more medical supplies that we were using at the time. There was money through COVID that we had to, to spend, to, to buy those, to buy that stuff. It's, that money's not there anymore. We didn't end up spending as much on EMS supplies this year, so I felt comfortable lowering that line just a little bit. And then the supply special line, that's where we buy our turnout gear. That is another line that jumped a couple of years ago. We're going to back down a little bit. It's mostly turnout gear. Turnout gear is about $4,000 a set now for just the coat and the pants, not the boots, the helmet, the gloves, all that fun stuff. And what we do is we, we have a program where we're constantly turning over turnout gear so that we don't have to buy it all at once. Everybody has to have two sets of gear, and we always have to have them maintain it. So every station's got a washer, every station's got a dryer. Every time they have an incident, a significant incident, they're, they're washing and drying their gear, so they have a backup set that they, they, they can use. And we want to try to keep that backup set, so it's obviously still serviceable from a, a mechanical point of view, but we also want to try to keep that stuff less than 10 years, which is the standard. So that will creep sometimes, but because it's backup gear, we'll allow it to creep, but we want to make sure everybody's got serviceable gear. That one, we lowered just a little bit, but again, we're at a point now, since we started that gear maintenance and kind of doing regular stuff, we've had some grant support in the past with that. We're hoping to maintain, maintain some of that from the state. We've been talking about that at the fire chief's level with the, with the governor. So we're hoping to make sure that I can make up some of those on that side, too. But that's, that's what that line is right there, so. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Okay. Thank you, Chief. See a number of hands up. We'll start with Madam President.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much, Chief, both for your presentation, your handout that I heard a number of us say we look forward to every year. It's really easy to follow along with what you're talking about in your budget and really tells the picture. And thank you to you and your team, most of all, for the work that you do every day. I had a question, I had two questions for you, but one was looking, I was going to ask you this question, and then you gave us the incident map. And so I think, if I'm reading it correctly, but you can correct me, I was curious to know how, how often your team is responding to fires versus, it seems to me that I do see your team responding a lot to medical.
Yes.
Or you, you get there quickly, and so it may be first on the scene for medical. And if I'm reading it right, it does look like 1,821 of your incidents, am I reading this right, were medical?
That's correct.
Response.
1,821 were medical-related responses. The remainder of those were either fire-type calls, fire alarm activations, fires, rescue incidents, car crashes, kind of the, the litany of other things that, that we would respond to, public assistance, stuff like that.
I was curious if you had a, my sort of anecdotal sense, when I've had occasion to have your team respond, you were right near the fire station. So often your team is first on the scene if we have any kind of a medical need. But do you have a sense, is it often because you're positioned at the three different fire stations and can get there quickly that you're first on, on scene? And what, what kind of training? I know you mentioned on, on the job and other kinds of training. I'm not sure we always think as much about how much training your firefighters need also in medical, so I was just curious about how you work that into their, their day-to-day.
We do. So all of our firefighters are required to be EMTs. They notice they have to have it when they come on the job, but they have to have it within a year, and they have to maintain that EMT throughout their careers. It's a, it's a condition of employment. For that, they have to do regular continuing education, and they have to do a refresher every two years. So they're constantly practicing our skills. We're an emergency-first responder agency, so in addition to the basic EMT stuff, we also have some, some drugs that we keep on, basic drugs that we keep in, in our equipment that we could administer, NACAN, EpiPens. We do have like Benadryl, Tylenol, and some other things like that. So we have to train on those skills. So we have, you see, and I didn't, I didn't cover it here because it's been there for a while, but we have an EMS officer that's responsible for making sure that all that training is, is being done, that folks are maintaining their certifications, and that we're ready to respond for those things. So we do a three-tier level response. We have the first responders, the first response level, then you have an EMT, and then we have paramedics. We have a great private ambulance service. Northeast Regional Ambulance is, is fantastic. It's, it's a relatively small company. I know a lot of departments with bigger companies have had more difficult times with response times in their ambulance. We really haven't seen that. They're very responsive to us if we have an issue. We're very, very fortunate in that sense. But you have an ambulance base that's down on Park Street, and then we have the police cruisers, which Chief Alash will talk about, and we have the fire, the fire department. So we're all kind of looking at it from different levels and from response areas, and also from different skill levels. So it's, I will say, one of the biggest things, we, we haven't really talked about the dispatch thing, but one of the biggest benefits that I've always seen from us going to a combined dispatch is the reduction in response times. And it has been truly remarkable for us to see that, now that everybody's kind of talking, that's one of the biggest benefits that we've seen of the, the combined dispatch, so. The, the most important thing is getting out the door. If we can't get there in a timely fashion, then we can't really do what we need to do, so. That is, that is one of the big things. So we are responder from three stations. And we take a look at the response times. It's kind of a, you know, I, I have to say, when the city was laid out for fire protection, they did a great job with stations. We're down to three now, but those three have tremendous access to the city headquarters. I would love, I talked in the past about replacing the station, but the, the bottom line is, it is truly the best place for our headquarters station. If you look at the, the heat map on the second page, all of downtown is red. That's where the bulk of our calls are. We have some tremendous response times because we're right here. If we have to go to the farms, we can shoot out the door and we run up Hale Street. If we have to go up to Centerville, we shoot right out the door. We have Essex Street right there. It's perfect location for us to get places. Still can be a long ride to some, some, some areas of the city, but as far as access goes, the, the location is fantastic, so.
Thank you. May I ask another question?
Please.
Thank you, thank you for that, Chief. That's really helpful to be able to think about. My other question for you had to do with, it was tied into dispatch because I see that it's been moved to that line item.
Yes.
And I appreciate you touching on that. But I was curious about mutual aid and just your sense of, if the staffing that you have right now, I know you talked about how, how many you need minimum to be able to cover your shift, how that impacts our ability to respond to mutual aid, or how often we need to rely on mutual aid? I know that we're sort of all, we're part of this larger network, so I was curious your thoughts on that.
We still, and we will continue to have to rely on mutual aid. Essex County, well, Massachusetts in general, has a, has a really good mutual aid network. Like I said, our call volume goes up every single year. I watch that, and I certainly, you know, have conversations about, you know, we've had grants in the past. We've made strides over the past bunch of years to get back to a, a, a basic minimum level that we were at. We got, we were, we were too low for several years, like almost 20 years. We're finally getting back to a point where we should never be less than three and, three and one in, in a city of our size. We are the city of Beverly. There's 50, 43,000 residents. There's a, there's a lot going on. I'm always amazed at how much there truly is in the city, because I look at it from a different perspective than most. I look at the airport. Today, they went for a fire on the fifth floor of the Cummings Center. Imagine what that would look like. It didn't turn out to be anything super serious, but that followed up a fire on Cabbage Street at the Indo. Again, you know, when we're, when we're, when we're showing up with our 13, the, the big goal is the, the faster you get water on the fire, the better things get. So if we can get there and get a quick hit on stuff, we're still going to rely on mutual aid coming in. But, but again, that's a shared thing that, that we still go out of town quite a bit, and we, I think we're pretty balanced in the mutual aid sense, so we will continue to rely on mutual aid.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Counselor Zonda?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chief, thank you for everything. I'm just trying to digest the overtime. First of all, the question is, do you feel it's adequate? I know you have it down at 620 with a plus 33%, but in the book, it's showing a negative 11%. And I know that that's always something that's brought to our attention, you know, always keeping a mindfulness. Do you think there's adequate money in that?
So it's funny, because every year, I get funded for a certain overtime level, and every year, that overtime is usually far, far higher at the end of the year. So this year, I'm showing, I think, eight, eight-something. What, what happens if I have people that aren't at work? If I don't have a position filled, sometimes I have to shift money from other places to get to that. But this year, I know for a while, I think there was some concern that I may have to come back and ask for money, and we haven't hit that point. So at that fund, that initial fund of 600,000 was where I was at this year. We're actually, I actually have a 620, which is an increase from last year, so it's.
So the book's saying 634, 196. That's what it's saying for actual, as of, I'm assuming when this report was printed.
Oh, I'm sorry, I might be.
So you know, I'm looking at this right now, is it to decrease at, at 11%?
Page you on, Counselor?
I'm on page 58. My apologies.
600.
Yep.
We see in the 634, which was the actual as of.
Right. Yeah, so again, if we have people out, if I have a, a position that went unfilled, sometimes filling a position of a retiree can be a little bit of a challenge. So if that person is not filling that spot, that means that money can be shifted into the shift coverage line, which will maintain the 13. So that's why that number gets inflated. Every year, the shift coverage line goes up, and it's not every year that I have to come back and actually ask for money. So this year, I, I didn't have to come back here and ask for money, but my shift coverage line is higher than what I had actually asked for at the beginning of, of the fiscal year, so.
And it's transferred out of the hire.
Correct. Yeah, it's, so it's money that's within, it just, I just.
All right, so I mean, again, I guess that the initial question was, is do you feel it's adequate? Because looking at the numbers, what's projected, you have it as a 33% increase, which is fine if you're, you mean, it's, but then looking at the book, it's showing at an 11% decrease, and then as well as on the general.
Right, it's, so.
General emergency pieces, it's showing that. So you're doing fine this right now, but with the proposed budget for next year, do you think it's going to be adequate for next year?
So what, what else do I appreciate? Because that is an excellent question, and it is so weird as things move around, how it, it, everything looks a little out of place. The bottom line is, it's kind of the same question I, or answer that I've given you for the last couple. It's all a factor of who is able to come to work. Mine is a job, ours is a job, that if you have a broken finger, you can't come to work. If you have a sprained ankle, you can't come to work. You put other firefighters at risk if you come to work hurt, sick, or whatever. So people are often out of work for an extended period of time. Last year, I had people out, two people out with shoulders for, for long periods of time. I have somebody out with a shoulder right now. If people are not out for extended periods of time, this money's going to be fine. I feel very comfortable with that. If I have a rash of injuries, or if I have somebody that goes on a military deployment or something to that effect, and those numbers stack up, then I would be back here towards the end of the year asking you to please fund a little bit more money. But this, right now, if people show up to work, I feel comfortable.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, though.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Hausman, sorry. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chief, two very different questions. One has to do with, I think you call it turnout equipment?
Yes.
Fire department jargon. Your uniform, if you will, your, your equipment. And the other has to do with the response times. So on response times, out of the 2,966 responses, you had 27 that were more than, it looks like 11 minutes and 40 seconds.
Correct.
And I was curious as to what combination of factors or what primary factor is involved in those incidents where the response time is, is greater? Is it distance or is it other factors?
It's multiple factors. On occasion, it's distance. If we're driving all the way down to the end of Essex Street, or if we're driving down to some of the side streets off of Grover Street, it is an extended period of time for us to get down there. The other factor is, we get multiple calls, multiple conflicting calls. We'll have three, four, sometimes five calls that are all in at the same time. So if we're tied up in one place, the call starts, the, the timer starts, but we may not be able to get an apparatus to a scene beyond, within that 11 or 12-minute timeframe. That's where that will come from. The other one is, this will include mutual aid calls. So it could be a 20-minute ride to another community. So there are some other factors that build into that greater than 11 and a half minute or 11 minutes and 40 seconds response time. But there are some, like I said, in, in this particular case, you look down that end of Centerville, those are the rare occasions that we might hit that mark.
Okay, so it's not really a resource issue. It's sort of a structural, built-in set of factors that, that drive that.
There are several factors, yes, several factors.
The other question is, I, I heard an article in the news last few days, actually, about firefighters' equipment, and that, I'm assuming this is accurate, that there's a higher rate of cancer for firefighters related to their equipment, that the inside of the equipment can shed materials that can be carcinogenic. And I, I was curious about your, or interested in your, your description of the, of the rotating process for equipment, but then you also said it, it's sort of a complete turnover
like I said, in this particular case, you look down that end of Centerville, those are the rare occasions that we might hit that mark.
Okay. So it's not really a resource issue. It's sort of a structural, built-in set of factors that drive that.
There are several factors, yes. Several factors.
The other question is, I heard an article in the news last few days, actually, about firefighters' equipment and that, I'm assuming this is accurate, that there's a higher rate of cancer for firefighters related to their equipment, that the inside of the equipment can shed materials that can be carcinogenic. And I was curious about your, or interested in your, your description of the rotating process for equipment, but then you also said it's sort of a complete turnover is about 10 years. Or maybe you're saying the equipment lasts 10 years. So I'm just curious, how recent, how new is the equipment that you are working with? I know you get grants for equipment over the, you know, last few years. If you just sort of speak to that issue about safety for your staff related to their fire, their turnout gear.
Of course, of course. So the real problem with, that you're bringing up about the turnout gear is what we call PFAS, right?
Yeah.
So fluorinated chemicals that are everywhere in our life. Unfortunately, we, as a society, have grown to truly need PFAS, everything waterproof, everything dirt-proof, all those little things that are in our life contain fluorinated hydrocarbons. Our turnout gear is no different. So for our gear to pass NFPA standard, effectively, they have to contain a certain amount of PFAS. The industry is trying to get those PFAS out of the gear. It is absolutely 100% true. We all know this. Firefighters have a higher degree of cancer rates. It's not always the turnout gear. If you think about what we're going into, if you have a frying pan, a Teflon frying pan, and you overheat that pan and you have burnt food in your house, you're breathing in those PFAS. The firefighters go to all these calls and we have a lot more exposure to those than, than most of the average folks do. That's one reason for it. Every single time we go to a house fire, regardless, we're being exposed to those PFAS. The byproducts of combustion have a lot of different toxic chemicals that will still pass through our gear. Our gear isn't vapor-proof, so a lot of those chemicals will actually get into our gear. And then as the human body heats up, the absorption rate actually increases too. So through the armpits, through some of the other areas where it gets a little bit more sweaty, then we have higher absorption rates. So it isn't just the turnout gear, but the turnout gear is definitely something that we're looking to move away from PFAS. The problem is, again, turnout gear is a little bit of an art form. Years ago, the department would just buy turnout gear because it was turnout gear. And then as you start to take a look at how turnout gear is made, there are some very important things that we have to consider. The number one killer of firefighters isn't, is, as far as right now is for measurement, it's heart attacks. So if we don't take a look at how turnout gear is made, we have to look at the heat protection, right, protecting us from the heat, but we also have to be able to release that heat. So we were buying gear that firefighters just weren't able to release that gear. It's super hot in there. It's super hot in there anyway. But there are two factors in turnout gear manufacturer that balance out, the protection from heat and the release from heat. We've got a really good balance now. It protects our firefighters from the heat, but it also allows them to be cool-ish as they're working. When you start looking at the turnout gear that's coming out that is PFAS-free, you give up on some of those things. What I don't want to do is reduce a cancer risk, but increase a heart attack risk, right? So, and I don't want to buy gear that's not ready for protection from heat either. So as we, as the, as the manufacturers start coming up with better alternatives for PFAS, we will buy turnout gear that is PFAS-free. But right now, we just want to make sure we're getting the right thing. We don't want to jump into something and create a bigger problem for our folks.
Very...
I hope that helps.
Very informative. Thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the chief?
I have one. You showed a picture of a brush fire.
Yes.
I know that's something that's been in the area last couple of years. What should we know about that?
Last year was a very uncharacteristic year. It was very interesting. It actually started with us. We had a good fire, a good, it was a big fire up behind Aubashon. It was on a Saturday, just happened to be out in the area. The folks were able to get a pretty good jump on it. It was very windy. Wind was coming off the water. It was a two-alarm brush fire. We had mutual aid for a brush fire. Able to handle it pretty quickly. That night, it kicked off in Salem. Then it was Middleton, North Reading, North Andover. There were fires all over the place. Our firefighters worked more out of town as part of that mutual aid network than they did in town. We have a statewide fire mobilization plan that hadn't really been used in 20 years, like a, as far as this area for, you know, we went to Worcester for the funerals on a scheduled deployment, went to North Andover, excuse me, to Lawrence. But other than that, there weren't too many. We'd had 10 deployments within a two-week period. We were taking mutual aid resources through the fire mobilization from the Cape for these fires. There were crews coming in from everywhere. It was, it was unbelievable. It was a mixture of a whole bunch of things. It was a huge drought. If you, if you got rain a day later, it was extremely dry. The leaf litter would come down from the tree and places that you had fires the day before were burning again. So there were a number of different things that kind of led into that. We've got a lot more rain this year. I'm not going to say we're not going to get it because that means that we would. But the one benefit, or, you know, I keep saying this, we didn't have the fires in Beverly other than a couple of smaller ones. But that means that out of town, a lot of that fuel is gone. In Beverly, still a lot of that fuel is there. So I remember, you know, my father telling me a story about spending weeks in the woods. We don't, we don't do that anymore. We still have plenty of woods. We want to make sure that we're managing the trails. Mike Collins, between Mike Collins and my fire prevention officer, Jake Captain Kryling, is really, really good. He's passionate about the woods anyway, so he's out there making sure trails are accessible, making sure that if he sees something across a fire road, he'll let either the property owner or on private property, or he'll let public services know and they'll go take care of it. But it is always a worry, you know, but we've been fortunate in Beverly to not have some serious events. We just want to make sure that we're continually prepared for them. I don't, I'm not going to say that. I'm going to stop myself short of saying we're, we're ready to go, but, you know, we got the new forestry truck last year. A lot of resources to bear for that, so.
Thank you, Chief. I think we are good.
All right.
Appreciate your time. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
And I would welcome, next to the podium, Chief Little Lusher from our police department. Chief, you're welcome to start off with some remarks, if you'd like.
You still have in the book up here. So good evening. Thank you for having me. It's always a pleasure to represent the men and women of the Beverly Police Department, the outstanding jobs they do every year. Looking at calls for services, we have over the past few years, we've increased every year approximately about 26,000 calls for service in the fiscal year. There was a change over in our CAD system, so crunching the numbers is a little tip, a little different this year to bring everything to bear. But it's always an increase. I think we were at 26,000 last year, about 26, 28,000 this year. So again, significant increase of calls for service. Majority of those are down in the downtown areas, we know, but they virtually go out throughout the city. As Chief O'Connor says, we respond to just about every medical, not all, but most medicals that come up in the city and we usually do get there first, even though he'll say that he does, but that's majority of the time we get there first. And that's only because the crews are out in the neighborhood, so that's, that's the only advantage we have. So looking back at last year, there were some anomalies in our budget. We had several officers out with either maternity leave, paternity leave, injuries, either illnesses or on-the-job injuries. So at one point during the year, we were down about 10% on our allotted manpower, which significantly impacted our overtime costs. We, again, are a 24/7 operation. We have to have people in the field for the same reason. If someone's out injured, or someone's out at training or some other type of duty, we have to fill those patrols to make sure the citizens are protected. So to do that, Captain Russo, who is a magician, and I move a lot of money around, as all department heads do, and we use some monies that, that we're able to get through the Commonwealth, through EOPS and different places, our Chapter 90 money, and we're able to fill all those overtime allotments without coming to the council. I think this is my 11th budget presenting and we've never had to come back to the council since I've been here looking for further money during the year. And again, that's very difficult when you're down 10% of your force, but we, we did a really good job of our moving monies around, saving monies when we could, and then filling our state obligations. Again, every officer has to have a certain amount of training. It's mandated by post, 40 hours of certain training, firearms training, anything you're certified on. You have to be trained in on a yearly basis, whether it's the taser or rifle, shotguns, pistols. We do our AED training, first aid, first responder, CPR, and then an allotted training that the MPTC, the Massachusetts Police Training Council, sets up every year that we have to go through. That's mandatory. So again, to send officers to those trainings, we can't pull officers off the streets because we are always at the minimum. We are always at the minimum. You know, a city of 44,000 people, we should probably have 86, 87 police officers. If you look at the stats through the FBI, a city our size, and we have 74. And our men and women do such a tremendous job to maintain the safety in the city with, with the, with the people we have. I'm very proud of the work they do. Other than that, I'll leave it open to the council for questions.
Thank you, Chief. Madam President.
Thank you very much, Chief, for being here. Thanks for your presentation. And as I said to Chief O'Connor, thank you to you and your team for all the work that you do day in and day out. And I realized, I said anecdotally, I often see the fire department first. I do work next to the fire station, so I shouldn't have been fair in saying that.
I'll give you that one.
No, no disrespect to your team as well. I had a question for you. All the way towards the end of your budget, the final line item is replacement vehicles. And I, I think this was not a surprise to me to see, probably not to other counselors either, because I think this was, as, as this budget was being prepared, this was one of the things that we heard would be funded through the general fund or as needed. But my question for you, I, I do know, you know, you mentioned your officers are out in the neighborhoods, they're using their vehicles all the time, 24/7, as you said. So in the past, I know we've talked about the reason for the vehicle replacement line in the police budget is because of the wear and tear on the vehicles. I just wanted to ask sort of your sense of this shift and how comfortable you feel with it, if you feel that sets us up well for you to have and your officers to have.
What we were able to do is, at the end of last fiscal, we had some money left over that we were able to purchase a car ahead of time. And then we had one vehicle budgeted in the '25 fiscal, which we made a purchase on. That's now being set up. Looking forward, though, hopefully work with, with Mr. Ailes and the council when it comes to free cash and as those did move to capital, as the mayor explained to us, all the vehicles will be moved to capital, we'll have to come back and make a, make a, not an argument, but we'll have to make a presentation for the need for new vehicles. Because again, what happens is if we don't keep vehicles in a newer phase for the, for the number, frontline cruisers, so the six beats, sergeant on the street, if we don't keep those vehicles up to a high standard, what ends up happening is they go out of service, there's maintenance issues, and if they're out of warranty, that runs in a high cost. We try to do all that with the frontline cars in a, in a warranty scenario, so that when we do lose an engine, it's replaced. When we do lose a water pump, it's replaced, and it doesn't cost us any maintenance fees. If we get to the point where we're running up cruisers to 100, 120,000, 130,000 miles, what's going to happen is the normal maintenance fees are then going to increase and that's going to impact the budget further down the run, the line too. So as, as we get into the end of this year and into fiscal '26, and we, we look to see what monies are available, we'll make a presentation to the council, I'm assuming with Mr. Ailes, to, you know, work, work through that and try to get some newer cars.
Go right ahead.
Thank you, Chief. That's helpful to hear your perspective and how you're thinking about that, as well as some of the things that you've already done, sort of preparing for this shift. Can you remind me, I'm just not remembering, do you have a program where you typically replace a certain number? Are there a certain number rotating in that when we've had the vehicle replacement line item, or is it really as, as you see them in need? I'm, I'm wondering if there's going to be a, a number that you're thinking it's the target we'd hope to be able to replace.
So historically, it's been three a year.
Okay.
Up until last year, when we reduced it to one. And I think the year before that, it was at two and we were able to get four. So over the last two or three years, we've done some moving around again of finances to be able to do that. But I think looking forward, we'll have to come up again with a, with our fleet, a fleet plan, what the mileage are, what the anticipated costs will be and come back to, to fill that need. I actually had an interesting conversation yesterday with one of the manufact, one of the sales companies that is on our bid list for the state and, and being advised that Dodge Corporation, which we have Dodge Durangos primarily because they stopped making the Charger. Well, now Dodge has turned around on that, is going to start making the Charger again, and they're also coming out with an electric Charger. So something that was not available to us. And by getting Chargers, we have equipment already in Chargers, even though they may be older, 2022s and 23s. That can now be swapped over to a newer car if we decide to go back to Chargers, and that'll save us money also. So these are things myself and the staff will work on.
Thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam President. Counselor Sweeney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And building off of the council president's comments, because those were questions I had as well, I do want to just make a general plug to the administration. I, once we complete that fleet maintenance plan, I think it would make a lot of sense to include the replacement plan for police vehicles in the capital plan, especially if we're pulling it out of the operating budget now. And, you know, similarly to comments I voiced in the meeting the other night with the public services team, specific to their vehicle line, those are obvious purchases that we need to make. I think there's an opportunity to make those as part of the larger capital plan and utilize free cash or other outside funding sources if we have a plan to continually replace the vehicles so that we don't fall behind. That's my main concern, and I'm glad to hear, Chief, that that's something you're already thinking about. So I do have questions on the staffing side of things. So it sounds like you addressed this question in your comments initially, Chief, but to be clear on overtime, you do see that million-dollar or so projected spending in FY '25 as more of an anomaly tied to the large amount of officers that have been out on leave as opposed to a trend that's going to continue? And so you feel comfortable with an $850,000 budget in this line for overtime?
Well, again, it's, it's always a moving target. We have two officers in the academy right now that are replacing retirees, so we have basically two more officers off the street because they're in the academy. We have another officer that's getting ready to retire, so we'll have to do another hire, six months in the academy and then several months of field training. So we always have those, those downsides and again, officers out injured. That, that being said, though, with what we have and with the amount of overtime, right now, we can make it work. And again, no unforeseen incidents. We have a major catastrophe in the city and it, it can blow the overtime budget out as any, any city would deal with. But those are things that I can't predict, no one can predict. But we, we make it work and we'll continue to make it work.
Okay. Thanks, Chief. And the second question I have is about reserve officers. I know under the post-standard changes of the last few years, that aspect of the departmental staff has pretty much gone away, is my understanding. So what does that mean operationally? What changes have you guys seen as a result of that?
Well, again, when post eliminated the, the reserve program, it did several things. First off, it didn't allow us to train officers up ahead of time before they went to the academy, and it didn't allow us to use them in positions to fill smaller needs and then to became, to the point where they became more seasoned and go out of patrol on their own. Now we have to send, right off the list, we hire people, we send them to the academy. What we try to do is we try to hire officers, make them reserves even though they're not paid. That takes them off the list. We then know who we're hiring. We make sure they're physically fit, they're maintaining their, you know, their credits and things to that effect. And then we can do certain things with them to prepare them for the academy. But we don't have that part-time group of individuals to fill voids that we sometimes need.
Okay. And is that, so I appreciate that response. Has that significantly impacted hiring or just has it been a pretty, have you been able to adjust without any major issue of bringing in newer officers?
We're very lucky. We're, we're, we have a good list. We have good people looking, looking to the future. The only, the only issue is, again, is that we, we used to be able to take a reserve officer or an individual, they would go to the part-time academy, they would get a part-time certification, they'd come back, they'd do their field training with other officers, be around other officers, and then we could see how they work. Then they would go to the academy, and we could also hire them full-time until the next academy started. So under the reserve program, the prior reserve program, we used to get, we used to get what we call waivers. It was a 280-day waiver. So we could hire somebody full-time and then just wait for the next academy. So we didn't have that lapse of personnel. Now, when people retire in July, and I can't hire somebody now until November when the next police academy starts. Under the old system, we could run that officer in a full-time billet until the academy started, then we would lose him for a certain period of time. But now we lose him for the whole time. We lose the position until we can fill it and then till they can get to the academy.
Okay. Thank you for that update, Chief.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Spang.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just had another question about a section that looks like it was zeroed out. It's for radios, purchasing replacement radios as needed. And I wondered if you had plans to use grants for that, if there are grants available, or if you'll find another way to buy what I assume you might need.
So what we were able to do is use money in the '25 budget that we had to make some purchases. And actually, we just put it in for a grant. It was just submitted yesterday, I believe yesterday, it was submitted to the, to the federal government. It was a federal grant for resources and hopefully we'll be awarded that grant. I believe it was in the area of $80,000, but we won't, we won't hear back for a while.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Rundus.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chief, I know dispatch is now under its own budget, but it's in your bill and I have to assume you have a little familiarity with it. Specifically is when dispatch was going in, the idea was to free up four patrol people to come off the desk and go onto the, into the street. Has that been occurring? But as well as, you know, I mean, overtime is creeping up because you're lacking people in the, you know, people working. So I'm just trying to get a sense of, with the dispatch center being now fully operational, people from the fire department being there, the hires and all that, are we seeing what was the expectation of having the additional staffing on the police department specifically? Are we seeing what was the expectation of having the additional staffing on the police department specifically? Are we able to have all sections of the city patrolled with these extra people now instead of maybe running a little short or having people coming in because there isn't enough staffing?
So this was a contractual obligation that we had with the unions. And what we did was, we did take those individuals that were working inside, they've gone out to the street as what's called a rapid response unit. So their function is saving us in other ways, but they are on the street. So what happened is if a police officer makes an arrest, say, out of Bridge Street, the rapid response unit goes up, grabs that individual, transports them back to the station, they start the booking process. The officer on the scene can finish the processing of a vehicle, if, I'm using a motor vehicle stop for instance as an example. Or even whatever the case may be, an assault or whatever. They bring that person back and they start the booking procedure. That officer is able to stay on the street longer and do what they have to do. Then when that's completed, the officer comes into the report that usually the transport officer will go back out onto the street and they're available as a backup unit when calls do come in. They also do the court transports in the morning. So again, we used to have to take a cruiser in the morning, we had arrestees to take them over to district court. They'd be out of the city for approximately an hour. That person does that now, which leaves our five, say, day cars in the city now, they don't have to go to court. And if we have to take somebody to Middleton Jail, that person does that. Hospital watches, we make an arrest or someone has to go to the hospital. That person now, that officer now goes to the hospital and begins the hospital watch again, which leaves the beat cars out on the street. So it is increasing individuals on the street, officers on the street, in a very specific function.
Thank you. Thank you.
Counselor Bowen, does your hand up?
Yes. So I had one question on the communication equipment lines. There are a couple of different ones, and I know with the new station and the shift in all of our systems, including dispatch, the maintenance of communication equipment just fluctuates quite a bit. And so I was wondering about that one and how it differs from, there's a computer systems line, and then there's a separate telephone line. And each one is significant, but just was curious about the differences, how they work together with.
So the communication line is the citywide communication system, it's in our budget. So it's budgeted through us. So all the fire department radios, I radios, DPW, a lot of that is maintained, the service agreements have to come somewhere, so it's aligned in our budget. The telephone line of the cell phones, the cruiser, MDT terminal, so every cruiser has a computer in it for computer-rated dispatch as well as all the cell phones and all that equipment. And then the, I'm sorry, what was the third one, Counselor? I'm sorry, I apologize.
I think that was the telephone.
That's the telephone.
Yeah.
Communications and then.
It's a computer, maintenance of computer hardware and systems.
So that's the CAD system. So there's a 40, like a $25,000 a year fee, maintenance fee on our CAD system, our computer-rated dispatch and records manager systems. And also to maintain all the computers within the station for the officer's report writing, administrative tasks and so forth.
Because, yeah, that one's pretty steady and now is $85,000. The maintenance of communication equipment, and it might just be a technical question for Mr. Ailes. It's like $8,000 actual one year, $140,000 down to $60,000.
It's a three-year agreement. I believe that the due purchasing was varied throughout the three years. But it's, again, the city maintains a two-way communication system with fire, DPWs and us throughout different towers throughout the city. The money just lands in our budget.
And then, thanks. Just had one other, well, two other questions actually about things that I'm not sure appear in the budget. But one is the critical incident training center that was a grant, multi-year grant. So not appearing in this budget, but I'm curious about the impacts on staff, whether any of the training costs for other things are going down or if we're just getting the additional benefit of that training through the grant-funded work.
So what that does, that pays for a full-time clinician that sets up the trainings. And we became the T-TAC for the area. The acronym I'm going to, is lost on me, but it's, what it is, is we train a majority of the police departments, fire department, firefighters for the city, our civilian dispatchers and some of the colleges in critical incident management training. It's all mental health training, it's a 40-hour course, it's run over a two-week period. So we've become the hub for that for the North Shore through that grant. We are able to send officers to that free of charge, cost-wise, because we're running the program. But there is backfill costs that we have to take out of our budget to get those officers trained. It's our goal to have every single officer of this department train in critical incident training, so because of the mental health calls we go to. I did want to bring that up also, you know, our two clinicians. One is grant-funded through Leahy, the second one is our full-time clinician, a city employee, Ms. Macaro. So those two grants, we're a little worried about, if you may have heard. They originally budgeted for 18 million through the Commonwealth, the government's budget cut it down to 3 million. It's gone back up significantly. I don't know what the last number it fell on is, so we're hoping to maintain those grants. If we lose those grants, we'd end up losing probably our clinicians. So hopefully the state will continue those grants.
And just one more, and I'll just add, I think I've said it in previous years. I think it's wonderful to be able to take advantage of the grant programming for those positions. And personally, and from what I've heard of their impact around the community, would want us to keep those positions any way we could, even if the grant funding weren't available. But the last question was just, at a community advisory committee meeting not too long ago, we got to see a brief introduction to the drone program and then got to see them in action last weekend monitoring crowds. So just wanted to know if that is an added cost or if that has just been kind of a separate sort of startup cost that may or may not show up in the actuals, may have been grant-funded, whether there's an ongoing cost for that.
Yeah, there's no more grant money for drones, they became too popular. I also sit on the NARAC committee, and we've shut off all drone requisitions that come into the committee. Because just about everybody has drones, fire departments, police departments. We were able to fund them through, again, different lines in our budget, through budget transfers, to get a couple of drones to start up the program. My offices are working towards different certifications. They have the basic certifications, they're moving towards further certifications. We actually hosted a class that was held by an instructor that came up out of Georgia and ran a program at Lynch Park, at North Shore Music Theater, running the drones inside, simulating crime scenes where a drone can fly around and look for people with weapons, things to that effect, interior searches. And one of my other add-on duties, I'm the incident command control chief in Nemlec, and the drones are now under my review there too. So we're looking to, in Nemlec, which is 65 different cities and towns, we're hoping to have 15 drones that can respond in different instances. We had a very, two very sad incidences back this year, one in December, actually Christmas of '24, where a woman was out with her dog and perished in the woods and the drone found her, bringing some relief to the family. Then we had another jumper off the bridge that the drone located up in the damaged river. So sometimes, you know, it's a necessary tool for some unfortunate circumstances. So right now, the idea behind the drones is search and rescue, monitoring certain situations. We had a lost youth, we had a lost elder up on, off of, out of Enon Street on a Saturday morning in a rainstorm, the drones went out for that. So they become very active. It's a very, it's an unbelievable tool because a lot of times the helicopters can't fly in weather that the drones can fly in.
And I think the demonstration was really powerful and those use cases, you know, it's a very cost-effective tool too and doesn't put officers in harm's way. So very, you know, excited to see that play out. And as we've talked about, I really want to see policies in place around what those specific use cases are, how footage is used or not, saved or not, so that the other side of like the privacy concerns and.
As we spoke about on Saturday, also the drones are a good de-escalation mitigator because we didn't have to put officers out in uniform to mingle and see, it may become a target for some people who may not have been happy. So this way you can, with the drone, you can kind of see what's going on and then stay out of the area. But we'll have the Massachusetts accreditation policy and I'll certainly be able to get that to you.
Chief, I have a follow-up question on the staffing discussion. You mentioned, based on the FBI benchmark, we should have 86 or 87 officers, we have 74. Was there any discussion about trying to increase our staffing level? Is that a concern of yours? If not, why?
Well, everybody would want more people, I can say that right up front. You know, we were able to fill all of our, you know, our billets and our patrols as needed. I only say that because it always puts us at the disadvantage of, I know over the weekend in the summer, and the officers know over the weekend in the summer, when they come in to work a shift, they have 16 hours. They're going to get held over just because of vacation and everything else that goes on. And we actually keep a very close eye on that for safety purposes for the officers, make sure they're not over-fatigued. And then as we move forward that. But again, I'll go back to, when I took this position in November 2013, we had 65 officers. Mayor Cahill and the council have done a job of increasing us to 74. I think that, I know we're in a tough fiscal moment right now, but hopefully if things turn around or increase or there's, or grant money's become available that we can apply for, we'll continue to do that, hopefully to increase our manpower. And we went from one school resource, one school resource to two. We took one community impact officer, we have a sergeant two now, and they do incredible work, as you know, and you deal with. And then our traffic units increased, so we're stopping eight, 9,000 cars a year, trying to keep the city as safe as we do. If you look at our serious accident numbers and things like that, they're almost at a minimum. They do happen, but they're very low, and it's because of the work that the men and women do.
Thank you, Chief. I know, you know, as I said, with the increase in volume and everything your men and women do, make sure we have the right staff. Secondly, on the traffic mitigation enforcement, I was glad to see that as goal number two on your department summary. Sergeant Nicholson does a great job. Is there a line item for things like, you know, rapid flash beacons or speed bumps or any type of strategies related to traffic mitigation? It's probably the top, you know, one of the top two or three items we all get every day. What more can we do?
We cannot use that grant money for that. So our grant money's broken into enforcement. You know, we have the seatbelt month, we have crosswalk month, we have distracted driver month, impaired driver month. That's how the money comes out of EOPS and the grants that we end up working with. And we end up focusing on different areas when those come out. Now, some of that money can be used for equipment, whether it's the traffic spies, whatever you want to call them, the traffic counters, the traffic boards that show you speed that we move around the city, the trailers and things to that effect. We bought some new lasers, handheld lasers, and replaced some radars within the cruisers. So that money can be used for that, and we use the grant money sparingly, but as much as we can. There's a split that came up. There was a time when you could only use the grant for actual enforcement. We were involved, the chiefs were involved in a committee with EOPS and ended up telling them, why are we sending money back? We have these other needs, they agreed. So they allow us a certain amount of items, there's a list of items that we can purchase off the grants. So any of those signs you see, the traffic signs, the spies or the boards, the trailers, those are all grants through the grant.
Great. Thank you, Chief. Other questions or comments for Chief? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Colleagues, got through that fairly quick. Go ahead, Counselor.
Mr. Chair, is it possible to ask, I know it's out of this particular situation with public safety, but it is many emails that we've all been receiving since the school budget was in front of us on Thursday. There's a couple of clarification questions I was hoping to ask whether it be.
Well, I was going to, yeah, just suggest that maybe we use a little bit of this time tonight to get ahead of the, you know, discussion in the future here. If there are general questions that we have for Mr. Ailes or Mr. Perry, or anything that we want to talk about in advance of that. So go right ahead.
Thank you. I appreciate that. It's, we've, since the budget here, when the public schools came in front of us, there's been numerous emails that I've received as well as conversations. So I don't know who would be best to answer this question. You know, the questions or the emails that I've been receiving specifically is to ask that the budget gets sent back, specifically the school budget gets sent back to the school committee for reconsideration. I want to have, make sure that I'm, when I'm responding to these constituents, that in fact, our authority is to approve a budget, it's to reduce a budget. But are we able to pigeonhole the school committee, or the school budget specifically and say, well, we just want to take that budget? Be like me saying I want to take the police budget and send it back to them and come back for reconsideration. So I'm trying to get clarification. I know the Ed Reform Act also doesn't allow us to go through their budget line by line as well. So I'm just trying to make sure procedurally and legally what we're able to do. And that's kind of making sure that when I respond back to these constituents, that they are actually the correct responses.
Mr. Perry or?
I just wanted to flag, our agenda for tonight lists specific department budget.
Our agenda for tonight covers the entire budget, Order 171.
Okay. I expect that most people tuning in are only expecting us to cover the planning department, fire department, police department.
Well, that would be a departure from past years and practices.
Okay. I wonder if tomorrow night might be a better night to, I have the same questions, have been getting the same questions and would anticipate tomorrow might be where.
I think clarifying perhaps our process is not a bad thing for us in advance of tomorrow. We can restate it.
I just don't want our budget to end up in an open meeting law violation, so.
I have our new solicitor here. Solicitor Olmixon, perhaps you would weigh in on this issue.
I have not looked at tonight's agenda, if someone has a copy of it.
Well, I guess when we say agenda, the only item in the city finance and property committee agenda are two items. One is the city budget, Order 171, and the other is the city capital expenditure plan. Those are the two items that are currently on the finance and property committee agenda. The schedule for tonight was laid out, but I don't view that as the agenda. Is that different? Is that a different interpretation than you have?
So what I'm looking at, I believe that Ms. Dupont just handed to me, is the agenda that was posted for tonight's meeting. Right? And it's labeled Finance and Property Committee of the Whole Meeting Agenda.
Okay.
Is that, great. I just want to make sure we're talking about the same document. Okay. So this agenda lists Order 171, mayor's fiscal year 2026 budget, department budget sessions, and then lists planning, fire and police department. The open meeting law does require that any agenda be posted so that members of the public can have reasonable notice as to what will be discussed at that meeting. I'm not sure I can provide any more advice beyond that.
And I guess, Solicitor, my interpretation of that would be that it would be reasonable for folks to expect a discussion on the proposed budget, which is the item that is before us. You know, we have the entire budget book here, we have Mr. Ailes, we have our budget analyst. To me, that was, you know, if you're advising we do something different, please let me know.
So I think, I understand that you have the book in front of you, Mr. Ailes is here, Mr. Perry is here. The only thing that will be looked at, if, per Counselor Bowen's comment, if there is some type of concern, is the agenda and what this agenda lists, which is the mayor's budget and department budget sessions.
Is that your advice?
That is, I'm giving you the law and.
Are you advising we curtail our discussion here? If that is your advice, then that's what I would follow.
I would err on the side of caution and curtail your discussion outside of these three topics.
Would asking Mr. Perry to clarify the city council's role in the budget be beyond the discussion that you're articulating?
I think clarifying how the city council can vote on the budget.
Related to the question about the school department budget?
I think a limited discussion about that probably would be acceptable with this agenda.
Okay. So with that, I would then move to Mr. Perry, if you wouldn't mind answering the question. And then perhaps we would move to adjourn. the question, and then perhaps we would move to adjourn from there, if that makes everyone feel more comfortable.
Related to the departments we talked about.
Just to restate my question, I'm looking for procedural, specifically on, I mean, I'm not looking for specific numbers, I'm not looking to cut numbers right now, I'm just looking for process and.
What do we have the authority to do?
Right. So that's what I'm looking for. I'm not looking for numbers, I just want to know, process-wise, what we are able to do, what we're not able to do, simply as that.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Keeping it as limited as possible, a couple of questions. Under the Ed Reform Act of 1993, the city council can only vote the bottom line of a school budget. You can't get into the line items of a budget, of a school department anyways. So there's that. You asked the question about referring it back to the school committee. I think that's more of a legal question. I've never seen it done, but my understanding is, even if you refer it back to the school committee, and they vote whatever they want to vote, it still has to go funnel through the mayor, and the mayor can either accept or reject it. I do remind you, as I said in my comment, my introductory comments last week, you need to get a budget done by June 30. I don't even know if mechanically you can do what you're trying to do because of that alone, but I would say that if you want to put a budget back to anybody, it should be more the mayor and not the school committee. That seems to be, to me, the right approach, because the mayor could still reject whatever the school committee wants to do. So, don't know if that answers your questions, Counselor, or?
That is helpful. All right. So with that, we're going to entertain a motion to adjourn the committee of the whole. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn committee on finance.
Get it referred.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Madam President.
Sorry.
Committee on Finance and Property will be referring back to the full council the item of Order 171, the proposed budget, for our public hearing tomorrow.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And the public hearing again is tomorrow at 7 o'clock, right here in council chambers, and will be carried by Mr. Kim over there on BevCam. So see you all tomorrow, and with that, entertain a motion to adjourn the committee on finance and property.
I'm happy to move to adjourn. Do we need to vote to refer to how to finance and property?
We do not.
Okay. Then I will move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.